Hey there. Want to make your voice heard at a Board of Supervisors meeting? We're all ears. Here's how you can get involved.
First, hop online and look at the agendas. This will give you the scoop on what's coming up before the Board. Each agenda item includes a brief description of the issue, the recommendations, and potential impacts. If you need more detail, check out the detailed reports online. Those are called Board Letters. Then decide if you want to speak at Tuesday's General Legislative Session or Wednesday's Land Use Session.
You'll have three opportunities to have your say. Let's start with non-agenda public comment.
This is your chance to talk about things that aren't on the agenda, but try and keep your topic related to county government. For non-agenda public comments, you can speak at either the Tuesday or Wednesday session, but not both. So pick your day accordingly.
And keep in mind, the Board can't act on the spot. They'll refer your comments to the Chief Administrative Officer, who will look into the issue.
Last thing. The Board will hear from the first 10 speakers, five in person and five by phone at the beginning of the session. Then all the remaining speakers will get their chance to speak after the discussion items. During the consent agenda, the Board handles a bunch of routine items with one vote. If you want to comment on an item, keep it simple. For example, "I'm John Doe, speaking on item 5, and I agree with approving the contract." Discussion items are the main event where the Board debates before making a decision. Want to speak at one of the meetings? It's really easy. Just hop online and fill out a quick request form at publiccomment.sanddiegocounty.gov. Pick the meeting you're interested in, hit the register button, then fill in your details. Make sure to include a phone number if you plan on speaking by phone. Prefer speaking at the podium in the board chamber? No problem, just pick the in-person option. After that, just check off the agenda items you want to talk about and let them know you're for, against, or neutral on them. Hit register and you're good to go. A confirmation email will land in your inbox to wrap it up. If you're speaking by phone, the email will include the instructions for how to dial in. Be sure to submit your request early. Once public comment begins on the agenda item, we can't take any more requests to speak.
And if you have documents, hand them to the deputy clerk when it's your turn to speak at the podium.
Now, you get two minutes to speak, but if lots of people want to talk, it might get cut to one minute. So you might want to consider writing two sets of comments, one for two minutes, another one for one. That way, if time's cut, you won't be scrambling. There's also a countdown clock at the podium to keep you on track.
Once you're at the podium, stay on topic. Stick to the current agenda item. If you stray off topic, you might get a gentle nudge to get back to the point. Keep your comments related to the agenda items' recommendations because that's what the Board is relying on to make a decision. Also, speak directly to the Board. They're the ones making the decision.
When your time's up, it's up. Overstaying might mean getting muted or even asked to leave. Now for some ground rules. For safety, keep aisles and doorways clear. If there isn't a seat, head across the hall to room 302 or the fourth floor balcony to watch the meeting. Respect is huge. Everyone should feel heard. That means you, other speakers, and the Board of Supervisors. Disruptive behavior gets one warning, and after that, a deputy sheriff might show you the door. So let's keep it respectful.
Your voice matters, and we want to hear from you. Remember, we're all here to make a difference.
Oh, wait. I'll just start. Okay. Good evening. Before we call our regular meeting to order, I'll turn to County Council to report out any actions taken in closed session during our special meeting that began at 4:00 today.
Thank you. The Board of Supervisors met in closed session starting at 4:18 p.m. today. All members present concluded at 5:01 p.m. No report -- there were no reportable actions taken. That concludes the report.
Okay. Thank you. I now call the June 9, 2025 San Diego County Board of Supervisors General Legislative Session meeting to order. We would like to take a moment to acknowledge the land that we call home. There are communities in the San Diego region that face unjust conditions and circumstances related to the environments in which they live. The tribal nations of the San Diego region are an example of one community that has historically faced such injustices. We acknowledge a harmony that existed between the land, nature, and its original peoples who have since endured displacement, persecution, and systemic oppression. We pay our respect to the unceded territory and homelands of the 18 tribal nations in our region, the most indigenous county in the United States. We aspire to learn from indigenous traditional knowledge and experiences in undoing the injustices of the past. Andrew, please call the role for today's session.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reamer. Supervisor Anderson.
Right.
Supervisor Montgomery Stapp.
Here.
Supervisor Desmond. And Vice Chair Lawson Reamer.
Here. Our clerk will read the invocation for today's meeting. Please stand.
Thank you. Vice Chair Lawson Reamer. Thank you to every seat that has been filled here today. Thank you for each mind and heart that fills the presence of this room. Help us all to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill, and grant us the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice. Give us steadfast purpose so that we may faithfully serve to promote the well-being of all people. Now, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and the pure republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do not have any proclamations today, so we'll move on through the order of business. We now proceed with non-agenda public communication. This is an opportunity for the public to address the Board on subject matters within the Board's jurisdiction, but not an item on the meeting agenda. The only action the Board may take is a referral to the Chief Administrative Officer. Under the Board's rules, speakers can speak once per meeting for non-agenda public communication. I think we will just begin. We will do all of our speakers that have called in at the beginning of the meeting because we don't have any that have signed up to speak in person. Additionally, in accordance to the Board rules, in order to ensure timely completion of today's agenda, for any discussion items with 10 or more speakers, individuals will have one minute to share their opinion. According to Rule 4A, members of the public that are non-English speaking and need interpretation assistance will get twice that allotted time. And a final reminder, according to the Board's Rules of Procedures, audience members shall not whistle, clap, stump feet, or do anything that disrupts the proceedings. If you disrupt the meeting, it will give even one warning. After that one warning, if you disrupt the meeting again, you'll be directed to leave the chamber for the remaining -- remainder of the meeting. Andrew, please call the speakers.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reamer. We have seven requests to speak on matters not listed on the agenda, all of those coming by phone. For those that requested to speak by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. When it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted, and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. And I remind the callers, they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking, and you'll have two minutes to address the Board. I'll ask you to begin by stating your name for the audio record. We'll begin with our first caller.
Back to basics. You keep mentioning stakeholders. Though I looked up the definition, here it is. The stakeholders of the San Diego County Board of Supervisors are diverse and include individuals and organizations within the San Diego County who are affected by or involved in the county's policies and operations. This can include residents, businesses, community organizations, nonprofit groups, and even tribal governments. The Board is responsible for making decisions for the entire county, so their stakeholders encompass a wide range of interests. So for you to continually ignore the need, the individual, is wrong. And I remember when there were hundreds opposed and only one in favor, and the motion passed, not reconsidered, but passed. You are all so good at disallowing us from speaking, disenfranchising us by your repeated BRAN Act violations, throwing me and others out for clapping or behavior that does not actually disrupt the meeting, allowing union members to disrupt it, allowing some speakers to be off-topic, but disrespecting and curtailing others who do it. One time introducing an unrelated motion right in the meeting, and your agenda items show a lack of respect for due process and free speech. Then you have the nerve to blame us for the unruly behavior in here. Look in the mirror. Stop hitting stakeholder against stakeholder. You need to get truly good.
Thank you. And I hear from the next caller.
Perfect. It's true. I wanted to share a few highlights of the Socialist New Deal Leaders Messaging Guide. I want to expose how some in office are incapable of their own creative thought. So quoting from the guide, abortion, reproductive rights, and access are central topics. When discussing these issues, frame Republican agendas as part of their efforts to restrict American freedom, aka flip everything upside down. Every elected official in this country must be an information warrior, quickly and forcefully correct misinformation, aka control the narrative. Embrace freedom language. Abortion is motivating, especially for Democratic and women voters. I'm not going to touch that. Clean energy is deeply politicized and polarizing. Avoid electric vehicles. Electric vehicles are not popular among many voters, especially when discussed as affecting what they will drive. Focus on other aspects of the clean energy transition that have broader appeal, aka keep pushing it, but don't let them know. Democrats have lost their traditional advantage on education, aka children in public schools can't read and the propaganda isn't working anymore. A trend among younger black voters sees them identified more frequently as Republicans, particularly among men. It is critical to show that voting for Democrats will empower this segment of the electorate, aka they're figuring out our lives. Pretend harder that we care about them. It's amazing how we have minions in office who do nothing but parrot what their party bosses have dictated to them, expecting us to buy what they repeat as if it's true or even relevant. Meanwhile, the state is in debt, the county's in debt, and many cities are in debt. Taxes on everything have been increased, and people like Tara want to add more taxes to pay for their own mismanagement. They're now putting 2020 on repeat, encouraging and supporting the communist and socialist terrorist insurrectionists on our streets who've been delivered lawyers and bricks while they shout out words like terrorists as fascist, but refuse to look in the mirror to realize that they are what they purport to be against, and they have no new thoughts. Traitorous snakes can only shed their skin; they never change.
Thank you. I hear from the next caller. Next caller is Marco Espinoza. Your device might be muted. Yes, please go ahead.
Hello. Good afternoon. Marco Espinoza, I just wanted to say hello, and I'm looking forward to today's meeting. I apologize I'm not there in person, but I -- this is the -- this is the week. This is, you know, I -- it's budget week. Thank you very much for all your hard work, and please proceed.
Thank you. And now hear from the next caller.
Hey, how you guys doing? Once again, I went ahead and committed an election crime, if you did not fix it. Your lawyer, Heidi, basically told me I cannot teach people how to commit voter fraud. Well, thank God I didn't teach people how to commit voter fraud. I taught you how to commit voter fraud. You're just sharing it with the people so that they can learn how to commit voter fraud and actually do it. See, I found a way to get through your little tiny problems and your, you know, your false things, your stupid-ass restraining order that doesn't mean shit, because I have no intentions of harming you at all. My intentions is getting you guys thrown in jail for election fraud. Now, by all means, what I did. Please ignore what I did, because I am telling every single Congress, Senate, Assembly, trying to make this as known as humanly possible, that if you want to learn how to commit voter fraud, go to San Diego County's website and learn from them. That's what I did. You guys could go to hell with all your corruption and all that stuff. You allowing voter fraud to keep Newsom in play so that you could, basically, use slave labor to get lithium instead of doing hemp batteries, instead of actually applying your notion. Here, Monica's going to go ahead and protest on the fact that Texas wasn't paying attention to the law, much like you guys aren't paying attention to a word I say and trying to tell me I'm spreading misinformation. Please, tell me where in that documentation that I gave you is incorrect. Oh, you can't, because I'm right, you're wrong, you could go to hell, and you will be going to jail over this. See, I used this restraining.
Thank you. Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes the request for non-agenda public communication for this meeting.
Thank you very much. We now move on to the only discussion item. This is item one. Ordinances amending the compensation ordinance and establishing compensation relating to administrative actions in the tentative agreements pending. Ratification for the employee bargaining units. We now turn to public comment.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reamer. Before we begin public comment, I would like to note for the record that two errata notices were posted for this item that made corrections to both attachments of the Board Letter. Those errata are available online as well as here in the chamber. We have 12 requests to speak on this item, five in person, and seven requesting to speak by phone. We did not receive any ecomments on this item. Any individuals that requested to speak on item one by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. Because there are 10 or more speakers in this item, you'll have one minute to address the Board. I'll ask you to please begin by stating your name for the audio record. I'll be calling you in groups of three, so please listen for your name. I'd like to invite for the first three individuals, Heidi Gabriel Pack, Kate Jones, and Robert Pitt. If I've called your name, please come forward.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. I'm Heidi Gabriel Pack with the Deputy County Council Association. I have worked for County Council for the past year as an advisory attorney. I want to speak to the reason why you are not updating County Council pay in the compensation ordinance today. County Council attorneys provide legal guidance on land use and environmental planning and advising different departments like Planning and Development Services. Our work ensures that development projects comply with zoning laws, environmental regulations, and the general plan. Preventative in-house counsel is the most efficient legal service that you can invest in. By comparison, hiring outside counsel would cost significantly more for specialized advice without invaluable institutional knowledge. This legal oversight is essential for sustainable development and environmental protection in the county. Despite the significance of this work, the county's proposed contract reflects an intent to pay County Council attorneys less than their counterparts in the district attorney and public defender groups. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Kate Jones. I'm a senior deputy county council, and I'm here along with Heidi to speak on behalf of the Deputy County Council Association. I am here to ask you, as Heidi did, and urge you to reconsider the current compensation package that's currently being offered to the County Council attorneys. County Council attorneys save the county and its taxpayers millions of dollars every year. We protect public funds, we ensure the county's compliance with state and federal law, and we proactively minimize the legal risk across all departments. Our work directly affects the county's budget line, and in having litigation handled internally, we avoid the exorbitant costs of outside counsel where hourly rates can often exceed $500 or more. Despite this exceptional value, the current compensation package being offered is substantially lower than those of our criminal counterparts. This disparity is not only inequitable, it is short-sighted and risks driving away the very talent that is essential to preserving the county's resources. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is coming forward. I'd like to invite the remaining speakers in person, Brendan Nunez and Eileen Bratton. If I've called your name, please come forward.
Good afternoon. My name is Robert Pitt. I'm a child support officer with the county and have been for 23 years. I'd like to have everyone's direct attention right now, because I want to say something that you very seldom hear. Thank you. Thank you to each and every one of you, and thank you to Ebony for creating the contract that you have. Under the circumstances in which we find ourselves, it was amazing to me that you did such a great job. So thank you for that from the bottom of my heart. However, I want us to have full understanding here and be fully clear with you. It was a great contract. It could have been better, and we can try to do better, and that's what I hope we do in the future. But thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, and thank you for everything you did for us, because you did something fantastic to help the employees of the County of San Diego, and that's awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Brendan Nunez, and I'm an HSS. I have been working for the county for 19 years, and I'm a proud SEIU member. I also would like to thank the Board for the contract that we have reached. Yet I feel this contract could be better. I'm looking forward to see change. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is coming forward. I'd like to invite the remaining speakers in person, Speaker in Person, Dave Blackstein.
Hi, Eileen Bratton. Can finally say my full name, because I think I have less than a minute of stuff to say. Worked for the County of San Diego for 26 years in many areas of public mental health, and I also want to echo my colleagues' appreciation for the contract. I know that a lot of us wanted more, but I feel like what we got was fair. But I do hope that you'll take seriously our recommendations, because retention and recruitment is a big problem. recruitment is a big problem. A lot of our departments are suffering, and people aren't staying, and a lot of that is Tier D. We really have to look at Tier D in the next few years when things get better, because Tier D is going to not allow us to keep good workers that know what they're doing and have the experience to really help the people that they're serving. So please consider that and the other proposals that we weren't able to get through this time for the next contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Acting Chair Lawson Reamer and the Board of Supervisors. I'm here to speak on behalf of our President, Crystal Irving. She was actually in L.A. this morning to protest the shameful and abusive ICE raids. We've been very busy today, beginning with the first of 40 meetings regarding the ratification of this contract, and are pleased to be here with a delegation from our bargaining team. I'm so proud of all of their tireless efforts. And today, I'm here to acknowledge the Board of Supervisors for doing your part to support a fair contract. There are many things in this contract that we're proud to support our membership, recognition of the cost of living, the opportunity for a wage reopener, and to have a critical conversation around Tier D. This was a very difficult environment to negotiate in, and I'm running out of time. As always, I want to thank Supervisor Lawson Reamer and Montgomery Step for being core partners, but this is a moment Supervisor Anderson, I want to acknowledge you. I'm trying to count to three, and I don't know how to get there without you. We wouldn't have gotten this far without your support, and I want to acknowledge that. I also want to let this board know, this is not the beginning, this is not the end, but the beginning.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. We'll now hear from those that requested to speak by phone. When it is your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted. You will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. We'll begin with our first caller.
Hey, earlier caller, I mean truth here. Whoever approved the two last-minute erratas, was that Claudia? That's highly unethical. This meeting was already last minute as it is. I am against this meeting being scheduled today to benefit the purple shirts, or the red shirts, or the orange shirts, or the yellow shirts, or the green shirts, whichever of the hundreds of groups show up here with their hands out. I actually think Tara also belongs in handcuffs, so David wears them. That's what happens when people impede the law, and this meeting scheduled for tonight meant the last budget hearing was heard with less than 24 hours' notice, an impediment to a lawful meeting. If nothing else, then for this negotiation, or settlement, or bribery, or ransom, or deal made under duress for these unions and county council, I'm going to recommend that as part of the deal, all of the top leadership, not just Crystal and David, go try to impede ICE from doing their jobs of getting criminals off the streets, because that means we'd have tons of tax dollars saved, and there'd be tons less political criminals off our streets. Throw in Maxine Waters, she's overdue, and also add Democrat Joel. Thank you so much. I'm so glad when people thank you for doing exactly what we know you've been doing for a long time. But you're terming out anyway, so who cares, right?
Thank you. And now hear from the next caller.
All aboard. Aren't the unions and yourselves supposed to be about treating people equally? But here, you and the unions who seem to have totally tossed the equity line, please do not bring it up again. You're saddling us with $390 million of inequitable wages that we get to pay for. Too many people in the same office getting different percentage increases. Why are you telling your people you care about them on a sliding scale, kind of like us? But please reject these. Why are market adjustments all over the board, a few 0%, 1.16%, 1.49%, 2.51%, 3% for the assessment clerk maybe make up for the lawsuits he may get for overvaluing properties, 3.7% for solid supportive attorneys? I'll be really...
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller. Next caller is Marco Espinoza. Your device might be muted. And we'll come back to that caller.
Here is a bright idea your lawyer said. Your lawyer said, hey, look, we fired Justin in 2017. He cannot ask any questions regarding election security. I bugged. I called 50,000 times, according to the Union Tribune. You guys didn't choose to do anything until I signed a piece of paperwork that, the only piece of paperwork that you would have allowed me to go through, which was a disability claim that I did not want. Let's be completely clear. As soon as I signed that documentation, you filed orders to have a restraining order furthering me to be quiet regarding election security issues. I went ahead and taught Carl DeMile how he could go ahead and cheat the election system through the registration process, and he decided to team up with a guy collecting registration cards, at the same time pointing out that the only...
Thank you. For the record, that speaker was Gambler Hermes. Go on to the next caller.
Good evening. My name is Becky Rapp, and I'm here to speak today out of concern for how county staff time and taxpayer resources are used, especially in light of significant costs outlined in this compensation package. A projected $140 million in compensation increases this year alone. Yet, we're still seeing hours of staff time being spent crafting and revising marijuana-related ordinances, ordinances that frankly do not reflect the public health priorities our communities are asking for. We're in the middle of a youth mental health crisis. We have serious challenges with homelessness, fentanyl overdoses, and the shortage of mental health professionals. Yet we're allocating legal, planning, and policy staff time towards enabling easier access to high potency marijuana products. This is not a neutral decision. Every hour spent on these ordinances, every consultant, every review, every draft is time and money not spent on child mental health, public safety, or overdose prevention.
Thank you. Now hear from the final caller. Again, the final caller is Marco Espinoza. Your device might be muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, please go ahead.
Fantastic. I was just going to say to all the members of the camp, great work. Keep going. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you very much. Do any of my colleagues have any comments or want to say anything on this item? Sue Bresner-Desmond.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Appreciate it. And I appreciate all the hard work that went into this with the staff and with our employees in working out, you know, what hopefully comes to a deal we can all agree upon. The only thing that I have in opposition to are these one-time payments that are contingent upon change to the county's reserve policy, which provides the additional one-time funds. To me, I've been very vocal about not using our reserves for salaries and those type of things, so I'm going to be supporting but voicing my opposition on, it's Section 31, Section 2.16.
Thank you very much. Anyone else want to make any comments?
I would, if I may.
Please.
Two things. One, I voted for the largest increase in the history of the county in terms of our employees in the last budget that we put together for our employees, and then we gave them another great one. And thank you, sir, because you're the first thank you I've heard in the last three years. And nobody on this board that I'm aware of is not pro-employee. We all want you to be successful, and we all have to balance it with the responsibilities of our constituents. But I'm grateful for staff for working so hard. I'm grateful to my colleagues for working so hard and being so focused. But a thank you once in a while goes a long way. So thank you, sir, for recognizing how hard we worked on your behalf.
Thank you. Sue Bresner-McGherny-Step.
Just want to say thank you to all those folks that were involved in the negotiation processes so far. Special thank you to Ebony, to Susan, to Clint, all of the members of all of our represented unions here at the county. But it has been, you know, a process, and it is a very unique environment. And so, thank you all for showing grace and patience along the way. And we have a very large data set to continue to work with as we look at the cost of living here in San Diego. But at the table, doing the best that we possibly can, I think, from my experience so far. So thank you, everyone, including county council, for your continued participation. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to make a couple of comments. I first just want to say thank you to all our county employees and how much you do and how hard you work every single day. I see you. I appreciate you, and this county would not and could not run without you. So just thank you so much for everything you do. I want to just, I also want to obviously thank our county team and especially Susan and Clint for your tireless work on trying to find a path forward, so thank you as well. And thank you to everyone who has been part of this bargaining process. And I know it looks like it starts just a couple months ago, but it doesn't, right? I mean, we are where we are today with significantly better contracts this time and three years ago than in many, many years because of the work that many of you put in to the equity study and designing it and fighting to make sure the methodology made sense. I think, you know, certainly in the course of this bargaining and this contract, I think I've learned that there's things that I hope we can change and do differently and do better in that methodology of that equity study. So I really hope that, you know, after this is ratified, that we kind of continue laying the groundwork for success, even greater success in three years, by continuing to sort of invest in a methodology that really makes sense to recruit and retain the best people for our county, because you all deserve it, and the citizens of San Diego County deserve it. So I just did want to take a moment to just acknowledge that this is a long process. This is not a process that began one month ago or two months ago, but it's really a process that began three years ago at the conclusion of the last contract and really thinking about how to lay the groundwork for ensuring that we are doing the best that we can here in San Diego County for everyone who works at our county. So I do think there's room to do better. I think we need to continue trying to improve, and I hope we can lay that groundwork starting now so that we're not, in three years, sort of scrambling. I think that's really important. And I also just want to acknowledge the really incredibly difficult moment we are in nationally, statewide, really globally, not just with potential kind of economic contractions and what that's doing to our county budget, but, you know, I'm sure as everyone's seen, there's a budget now at the Senate making, most likely about to make its way to the president's desk that, you know, is looking to cut pretty core county services by hundreds of millions of dollars annually. So we are in an incredibly difficult moment, so I appreciate how hard everyone is working to come together, given what we're facing and the threats we're facing nationally. So again, thank you so much. You know, always you bargain with our county team, but I'm always also, doors open to talk bigger picture about your needs, what your concerns are, and strategy about how we set ourselves up for success again in three years. So, you know, I've had the opportunity to meet with many of you, but if I haven't, please reach out. So, thank you very much. I'm happy to make a motion.
Second.
Oh, we got a race. Sue Bresner-McGherny-Step beat you to it, though. Yeah? I made the motion.
Close second.
Okay. With that, we have a motion and a second.
Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. Andrew, do we have any additional non-agenda public comment? Okay, great. With that, this meeting is adjourned.
The next regular meeting of the board is Tuesday, June 24th, 2025, at 9:00 a.m.